On our agenda today, we have COVID update, a discussion about land conservation goals. And when we get to that item, Commissioner Wells, are you going to kind of tee us off on that? Awesome. All right. And then we're going to have a presentation on the employee compensation study. If we get to those and have plenty of time left over, I thought we might maybe just have a brief discussion about one item that's on the agenda for the for the five o'clock meeting, which is we have a couple of ARPA proposals that have some time sensitivity around them. And so our Early Childhood Education Committee and Affordable Housing Committee are making recommendations around three proposals. But a lot of this has been sort of developing just even up until today. Like our Affordable Housing Committee met this morning or this afternoon and made some recommendations. So maybe we can just look at those real quickly since it's not, some of this information hasn't been published over the last week. It's been more of a work in progress. So we'll look at that. Any other items that anybody would like to discuss at the briefing meeting? Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the five o'clock meeting? All right, well, let's get started with our COVID update.
Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity to provide a COVID-19 update to you. Thank you. As of April 27th, there have been 53,072 total confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Buncombe County. And after experiencing several weeks of very low trends, we have experienced an uptick in cases following the area's school spring break and the Easter holiday. You can see that uptick at the tail of the curve shown on the screen now. Currently, our case rate is 136 per 100,000. And you can just see that slight, in relative terms, it is still very low, but you can start to see that slight uptick there. This is very similar to an uptick in trends that we saw about a year ago after Easter as well. Just to mention wastewater surveillance has also shown the same trend. While overall and relatively still numbers are low, there was an upward trend in that surveillance metric as well. As I said, it's not terribly unexpected that we might see an uptick in cases, given the holidays and the spring break activities, when more people are interacting with each other and spending time with each other. They tend to gather and traveling to and from our community and to other areas. So this is just a reminder that COVID-19 and its variants, including our Omicron variants and subvariants, continue to thrive in and around us. And this illustrates the ability of COVID-19 and its variants to infect people and infect when given ample opportunity to do so, like gatherings. So we'll continue to watch the case trends in the coming weeks. I am hoping that after the incubation periods, we had spring break followed by Easter. And so as those incubation periods following the holidays and spring break travel begin to close, that we will see a leveling and a subsequent decrease. So that's what we'll be watching for. And while cases have increased, hospitalizations have remained low and stable. This is on your screen now. At the moment, this suggests that cases, while cases may be increasing, they may be mild and less severe and that folks who are being infected are not necessarily requiring hospital care. Just to note that Buncombe County has experienced 557 COVID-19-related deaths, with two being added in the previous week. And this also represents a plateauing of death rates in the last several weeks now. Just a reminder that we have adopted the CDC community level to guide general public recommendations several weeks ago toward the beginning of 2022. And as a reminder for everyone, in the highest community level, everyone would be recommended to wear face covering, whereas in the medium level, those who are immunocompromised or at high risk for severe illness would be recommended to wear face covering in indoor spaces. And at the lowest level or the green, no other recommendations are suggested other than staying up to date with your vaccines and seeking testing should you have symptoms or an exposure. The current community level for Buncombe County remains green or low, as indicated on your screen. This marks the seventh week in which Buncombe has been in the low community level. As I stated, the community recommendations at this time are to stay up to date with vaccines and get tested if symptoms are exposed. Now, given the recent uptick in cases, it is important for each person to assess their own personal risk factors and their own level of risk tolerance, especially in crowded spaces, as well as the other recommendations of, in addition to getting tested if symptoms and staying up to date on vaccine. That actually, like that personal assessment of your own risk and your risk tolerance is something that we will continually be doing and should be from here until the near future as COVID-19 will be present in varying amounts going forward. And speaking about vaccines, we've seen a modest increase in our 25- to 49-year-olds receiving at least one dose and also a modest increase in our 75-plus population receiving one dose. Interesting. Other groups have not changed since the last update. We have 180,355 individuals that have received at least one dose in Buncombe County and over 172,440 have completed their series, with now almost 105,000 having received a booster or an additional dose, making our booster group the fastest-growing vaccine group. And this is, again, just a moment for me to have a reminder for folks that vaccine is available for everyone five and older, staying up to date on your vaccine, including receiving a booster if you're eligible, is recommended. Everyone 12 and older is eligible for a booster. And now, just a few weeks ago, those 50 and above or with underlying health conditions may receive a second booster. And just to update you on some other vaccine news, Pfizer has requested an EUA for the five-to-11-year-old booster, but as of right now, a booster for that age group has not been authorized. In addition, Pfizer and Moderna are submitting data to the FDA for review for children six months to four years old. It is expected that they will seek that EUA, again, Emergency Use Authorization Amendment sometime this month. And so we would expect that possibly by early June for that population. And statewide planning has, is underway for this age group as we expect them, as I said, to be eligible in the coming weeks.
Stacy, you said both companies are going to, are expected to apply for that?
Correct. They are expected to submit their data to the FDA for that, for those age groups, six months to four years. And just a reminder to our community that Buncombe County HHS is still providing vaccine at our health department located at 40 Cox Avenue in Asheville. And we are making progress in the hiring of our mobile team. I'm excited to tell you that we now have our supervisor onboard and continuing to interview and the hiring process for our other positions. I hope the next time that I see you, I will tell you that that team is fully intact and ready to go. And, you know, not to say, you know, that we are extremely eager to have our team in place so that we can continue our equity-focused outreach for COVID-19 and many other services. So to say the least, we are very excited to start having those folks become part of our team. In terms of testing, I'd just like to remind folks that our state testing resource, StarMed, still remains at Asheville Mall. In addition, I want to remind everyone that, as I did a few weeks ago, the federal administration announced a few weeks ago that households could receive a second round of at-home test kits for free. I do encourage individuals to go to covid.gov/test to sign up for that. All that's needed is your name and your residential address. This is a great way to have tests on hand at your house should you need them. And having at-home test kits is one way to help limit the spread to others through quick identification and then limiting your contact with others. And as I mentioned last time, I do want to encourage other community partners and organizations like churches or community groups and community centers or civic organizations to take this opportunity to help others in our community get connected to this resource who may have limited internet connection or not feel as confident or comfortable with technology and help them sign up for their available tests. As far as Test to Treat, that initiative launched in March to give individuals a way to quickly access free treatment for COVID-19. Through this program, people are eligible or able to get tested. And if positive, if they are positive and a treatment is appropriate for them, receive a prescription for an oral COVID-19 treatment from that provider and have their prescription filled all in one place. So this is your one-stop shop from, to get tested, get a prescription, and get the treatment that you need. This program does prioritize individuals with high risk of severe disease from COVID-19. Treatments are most effective within, when taken within five days after symptoms onset, which is why it is very important for folks who test positive, who may be at risk for severe illness, to contact either their personal provider or to reach out to a Test to Treat clinic for treatment quickly if they have symptoms and are at risk, are at risk for getting very sick. When I went to the website just the other day, it does appear that there are now 10 Test to Treat locations within about 30 miles of the 28801 zip code. Many of these, or the bulk of these, are CVS Test to Treat providers, but we do have a couple of federally qualified health centers that are also listed there. And you all in the community can use that link and put in whatever desired zip code you want and whatever desired radius in which you're willing to look and find Test to Treat providers within your desired area. And as I wrap up today, I just want everyone to remember just a few things that cases have increased. Sorry for that typo. And cases have increased, so it is important for you to monitor your symptoms and exposure. Remember, it's always important to get tested if you've been exposed or having symptoms. If you're positive or you, and/or you are having symptoms, please stay at home. Wear a mask around others. If you are high-risk for severe illness, talk to your provider about treatment and/or check out one of the Test to Treat providers in our area. And remember to stay up to date on vaccines. While I do have this moment, and I know it's on your agenda for five o'clock, I also wanted to recognize that it is National Nurses Week next week, May 6th through May 12th. And as I said, that is an item on your regular agenda. I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate public health nurses who work for Buncombe County and wanted to use it as a time to celebrate and make aware the essential role of public health nursing in our community, whether they're investigating communicable disease and working to, working very hard to prevent it and educate about it, or providing vital reproductive health services, working alongside parents and children, or helping, you know, many people within our community have access to opportunities at health. Our public health nurses are working very hard every day and are incredible public servants. So just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to each and every one of them. And thank you, commissioners, for the time today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, Stacy. On the Test to Treat, the places where you can do the testing and get the treatment right away if you're positive and you meet certain criteria, could you just share a little bit more information about, about the criteria for folks who are likely to be then approved to use the treatment protocols? Because it's not necessarily automatic, as I understand it, right? So if someone's, you know, very young and in excellent health, perhaps it wouldn't be recommended for them. But do you have a sense for, like, what percentage of people would likely qualify for treatment? Is it just how those, kind of how those criteria work and what we're seeing so far in terms of what percentage of folks likely would be recommended or approved for a treatment with the antiviral medications?
Thanks for the question. So yes, there are specific criteria. In addition to that treatment is best when, within a certain amount of time, which is within five days of symptoms onset. So that's the big one that first gets to the next criteria, which is typically those folks who are at the highest risk for severe illness are going to be the ones who are eligible for treatment. I just saw an article the other day for North Carolina that roughly two-thirds of our entire population would be eligible because of underlying health conditions of one, one way or another, whether that could be, you know, diabetes or cardiovascular disease or obesity, these types of things. One or more of those underlying health conditions could put you in a risk, in a high-risk category for severe illness.
Okay, so about two-thirds of the community probably meets those criteria. So of course, it's voluntary, so if they want to do that, then they would be eligible. But if they do need to meet the criteria, if someone said, you know, look, I am young and healthy and maybe they don't have any of these criteria, but I'd really like to do it, it's not, you can't necessarily just opt in because you want to. You do, it is a requirement to meet one of the criteria.
That's why it's important that if you test positive at home or you go to a Test to Treat facility and you test positive there, that healthcare provider at that facility is going to assess whether you meet that criteria, whether you're within the timeframe of the five days of symptom onset or if you meet that, that you meet the eligibility or the criteria for treatment because you are at risk for severe illness. That's correct. That's why a healthcare provider is going to make that assessment for you.
And if someone does have an underlying health risk, but it's after five days, is that kind of an automatic not eligible? Or, I mean, there's all the research showing it is definitely most beneficial when started within five days. But is that kind of a hard and fast policy or how does that play out?
My understanding is, is that it has to start within the five days of symptom onset. I can get back to you of whether or not best practice is that it is a hard and fast, like no? I am not sure of that at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for the additional details. Any other questions, commissioners?
Stacy, I have a question. To get the booster, all I have to do is just walk in between eight and 4:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That is correct. You can come to the health department and get your booster. You can come to the health department and get any dose you need. And you can walk in and we have intake, especially for our COVID-19 vaccine. Although we've integrated into our immunization clinic, we have a special intake for that so that folks can walk right in and get that. Thanks for asking.
All right, thank you, Stacy. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion about Buncombe County land conservation goals. And there are some recommendations that are coming out of the county's Energy and Environment Committee. And so I'm going to turn over Commissioner Wells to talk about some of the recommended goals.
Thank you. Just to give a little background, we currently have such a strong conservation program in Buncombe County that benefits from the very active citizen leadership on both our ag advisory board and our land conservation boards, clearly our dedicated staff, some of who are here with us today in case there are other questions. And also, very importantly, the many landowners across Buncombe County who have voluntarily conserved their farms, forests, and mountains. And so I think that context is really important then when we're looking at this goal that we're recommending here. So the recommended conservation goal, and staff worked on this diligently on this and then brought it to our Climate and Environment Committee. And they recommend, the recommendation is that Buncombe County will help initiate the conservation of 20% of the county's total acres by 2030. And just to give some context with that, the current status right now is we're right around 18%. That is already currently protected. There's a little over 1,400 acres that are in progress. So then, when we look at what it would take to get to that 20% goal, there's a little over 6,000 more acres needed to achieve this goal. And I do think that our community has shown a strong appreciation for, in connection to nature and the land. And so it's imperative that we're good stewards of these natural resources that we are blessed to have here in Buncombe County. And I do believe our future generations will one day thank us for having the foresight to proactively conserve this land and reach these ambitious goals. So the specific, if you look at the specific funding request then for this, and this is in addition to the current 750,000 that we have allotted over the course of this time in order to do this. And this is still leveraging other resources, leveraging federal, state, as well as the donations from landowners and as well as other contributions. It would be about 9,500,000, right around that. One other point that I did just want to make, when we looked at the goal, we said we'll help initiate by 2030. And I just wanted to point out that the conservation easements, it takes multiple years. So that's why we said, because when we start that process, we may get all these initiated by that time. But sometimes it takes two to three years for a project to close. So I did just want to remind everybody of that. It's an important point because it takes, it's not something quick. It's something that takes definitely some, a little bit of time there to get to that. But that hits up, hits on those main points, I think. And Commissioners Sloan and Newman, do you want to add anything to that?
I'd just add, I guess that, you know, this is something that we are, that I feel like is important to all of us, is important to our community. We hear it when, when people come and talk about, you know, preserving our national forests. We hear it when we get a new state park in Canler or private landowners take on this effort to preserve land in their own backyard, which is also something that's, you know, occurring recently in Canler. And it's just, so it's kind of occurring naturally to some degree. And I just think it's really good to have a goal and to put some numeric values to it and put, put it on paper that we kind of want to make it happen financially with, with county government and staff support. I think it's a reasonable goal over this, you know, this quantity of years. It's, you know, also something that can hypothetically be funded through multiple sources that we might talk about later today. And so I'm just, yeah, I'm just excited about that and excited to see this committee bring, bring everyone another, another goal, achievable yet ambitious goal, so.
I would just add, you know, I think that this is really about building on these proven really successful initiatives we have in the community. There are so many private landowners in the community who just, you know, really love their, love their land and they want to see it protected for future generations. And they're willing to take steps to permanently protect these properties, oftentimes by donating, you know, all or very, the majority of the market value of their property. So they're, you know, they could, they could probably make more money, you know, if they wanted to just sell it for development or for other purposes. But they're willing to, to give up part of that potential financial return in order to preserve the places that they really love and care about. But, and so, and so, you know, a relatively small investment from the county just helps produce such a significant conservation value. I mean, if we can achieve this goal of preserving over 6,000 acres between now and 2030, and we have this additional investment of around $10 million, just keep doing what we're doing, so that'd be about $17 million that we get invested. If we can preserve 6,000 acres through these initiatives, that would mean that we're preserving this land at a, at a cost to county taxpayers of less than $3,000 per acre. I mean, that is a tremendous conservation benefit for the amount of funds that we would be putting in to help kind of make these partnerships and these great projects happen. So I think it's just a great value. And we're excited to see, and there's this, and there's this pipeline of, like, there's this backlog of landowners who want to do it. And so we just need to kind of get some resources in there to help, to help them do what they want to do to protect their property for the future. So really exciting. And now, so we're at the briefing meeting, so we're not going to vote on this right now. We don't typically vote at our briefing meetings, so this is just to kind of review the goal. And then we'll place this on the agenda for one of our next meetings to more formally adopt. Is that the process we're looking at?
I assume so.
Right.
Yes. Do you have an idea what month you want to bring this forward? Would it be the meeting in June?
I'll just say the next meeting.
Next available meeting, seems.
Okay. The next meeting or the next available? I'm not sure how long we want to wait. It's on the next meeting?
Let's just do it. I don't think it's going to take long, since we're kind of talking about it now. I bet it'll, yeah, just go, we'll just do it. All right. But it's, we don't want to put on the consent agenda. There may be a consent consensus. It is an important goal, so we'll just, we'll take it up and we'll, we'll vote on, we'll formally vote on it. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Thanks, Terry. All right. The last item, well, we do have the ARPA recommendations, but the next item on the agenda was the employee compensation study. And Sharon Burke is here to help us with this.
Good afternoon. I'm very excited to present to you today the final phase of the employees' salary study. And, you know, it would be really remiss for me to stand up here and say, I did this. So I want to acknowledge all the folks that, in the background, that had significant, significant efforts in this. My team, my compensation team, and I have some of them with me. So we have Melissa Reckman and Leslie Sobel. They head up my, my compensation team. But I think with the work that these two amazing individuals have done on this, get choked up here for a sec. With the amazing work these two have done, the rest of the team have had to step up and help them too. So it really was a huge effort on the entire HR team. On top of that, we have the Office of Strategic Initiatives. Heather Parkinson has been amazing. And she has worked side by side with my team to get this project moved forward under Rafael Baptista's direction. And I can't forget the budget folks. They have guided us throughout this project as well. So this start, I want to start off with this, a real quick overview. And so when you look at this study, this has been going on for a really long time. Since 2018, 2018 was when the county hired Evergreen. And Evergreen was hired to come on in and they were looking at how we compare our salary and our grading system to our peers. And what they did was they identified some areas of opportunity for us and provided us a report that outlined that. And from there, the Office of Strategic Initiatives and Human Resources were asked to create a pay report. And it was a position and pay report. And really what they were looking at was, and why should I say, what they identified was, is right here, is looking at the four focus areas. And one was, we didn't have a compensation philosophy. And without a compensation philosophy, how do you know what to pay people? How do you know what your salary grades are? And from there, a report was, and this is just, shows you some of the timeline. At this point, this is when County Manager Pender showed up and was hired and has been able to really lead us. And so she formed a compensation team. And that compensation team was brought forward from 22, of the 22 departments we have. So we had representation across the whole entire county. One of the things that came from that work group, again, was the pay, you know, well, I should say, the, the philosophy, compensation philosophy that really was the foundation of the study that we worked on. And our study started in 2020 and we finished it at the end of 2021 and worked on recommendations since then. So once again, here's our project timeline. We've gone over this, or I've gone over this prior to, but just really quickly. Phase one, what we found was many of our positions didn't even have job descriptions. And so we had to really start right back at the beginning and, and create job descriptions, work with directors to find out really what were our folks doing and what was the, the knowledge, skill, and abilities that we needed to actually perform those jobs. And from then, we started doing a market analysis. And so we went And so we went and looked at who are our peers and what does that look like? And so this is where budget came in. And we looked to say, you know, what, what does that look like? And they helped us form our, our peers. Phase three was when we really focused on equity. So we've got our job descriptions, we've got some peer data, and what we were looking at is for internal equities. And we focused on race, age and gender. And the fourth is really where we started putting the, the job families, the, the foundation, brick by brick, building our salary, our salary plan, and then start analyzing employees' education and experience above qualifications to see, are we paying them appropriately? Bringing it forward, phase four, we're bringing it all together. So this is where the market analysis came forward, and I may spend a little bit more time on this one. And so we started off surveying, we asked 20 agencies and 16 actually responded to us. Of those 16, we asked for 177 benchmark positions. And what that means is those are positions that typically every county will have, accountants, administrative assistants, attorneys. And we, we asked them to provide us, we, we gave them our job description information and a title, because we felt it was really important to make sure that we actually had a match, because what one administrative assistant could do is maybe not what another administrative assistant might do in that particular position. And so when they came back, we either matched them as exact match, good match, fair match or poor. If they came back poor, we didn't use them, because obviously it had no relativity. And so then we, we gathered all that data, so we asked for what was the average pay for that position? And then what was the range, beginning, mid and end for that position? And what that data does when we get it back, it helps us start to look at where is our market, you know, where's our market median? And that's really what we were, we were striving for. We then had to work with budget and again, back to OSI, and look at creating a, a mechanism where we can normalize the data. So we all know it's pretty expensive to live here in Buncombe County, but we want to make sure that if we're looking at apples and apples, we, we could actually say we're looking at apples and apples. And how to do that was through regional price parity. And what we did was we took everyone's wages and then we brought them up to the national average. So it really doesn't matter how much Buncombe County, how expensive it is, it's, it's all at the same level. All right? And so from there, I mean, I should say, let me back up. So here are the counties that we have received approval to use as our survey, market survey recipients. Any questions yet on that part? Great. So then we went into the market evaluation. And really what we were looking at is, you know, using that, that data, and I already sort of jumped ahead a little bit, and what we were looking for is the market rate. And, and how do we create, you know, true wage calculations? And we did that also by including the living wage. What we found was that our spreads between ranges and spreads between the minimum of the grade and the end of the grade was, was far bigger than some of our other peers, so we, we looked to adjust that too. All right, so now we're getting to the good stuff. All right, so how we would look at each classification? So each position is classified and we're looking at, when we try to, when we're looking to decide where do they fall within the grading system, we're looking at the compensable factors. And what they, those categories and those compensable factors, they come out with complexity, scope of knowledge, problem solving, contact with others and leadership. And there's three or four levels depending on those categories, and our categories break out to support, professional and then management. This is a little deeper dive. So when we are taking a position, what we look at is the complacency, complexity. And then we take the job description and we just look at the, the, the work that's being done in the job and we compare it to our compensable factors based on, you know, for this position, or what I'm showing you right now is our support. And where do they fall within level one, level two, level three? And you'll see each one of them actually have a score above them, 100, 150, 150, and that's where they would fall. And I'm going to show you a little bit further right now. So this is even deeper dive. So when you look at the recruiter position and the rec services position, I highlighted them in red. So you're going to see that the recruiters' comp factors all total up to 806. And then recreational services program manager comes up to 875. When you look to the right of that, where it talks about complexity, both positions were pretty equal. Problem solving, pretty equal. Scope of knowledge, pretty equal. And then when you looked at leadership, now leadership doesn't mean necessarily that how many direct reports they have, it's really, you know, how they work within our community. Are they a leader within the community or leader within that job that they're using, that they're performing? And that's where the recruiter was a little bit less than the program manager. And then both of them scored equally as contact with others. So when you look at the total score, obviously the recruiter is a little bit less. And then we're going to go over and we're going to, up where you see the arrows, where 765 to 786. If those compensable factors fall within that spread, they land in a grade 208. And this is how we did it for every single one of the positions. So, you know, if down the road, we have to go back and look to see, you know, did we classify this position right? We're going to be able to have a defensible way of this is why we did it and this is exactly how it played out. So now we're going to look at the salary evaluation. And so one of the things that, you know, as, as you're, you're looking at, you know, what does, what does our grading system look like? And so we decided to break it into quartiles. And, and so you're looking at zero to five years, six to 15, 16 to 25 and 26 plus. And we're looking at, in, in county government, the lifespan of an employee is about 30 years, and so it's a 30 year spread for this as well. And that first quartile, that's where someone's, you know, they're, they're just new to the position or they're really gaining skills and they're gaining skills with the knowledge of the actual organization that they're working for. Same thing with second quartile, it's a little bit more skilled and they're becoming more proficient. And by the time they hit that 26 years, they're an expert. They, they have a lot of institutional knowledge and they're really able to make a, a significant long-term, you know, impact in the organization. So as we started plotting employees out, we plotted them out based on their education and experience above the minimum qualifications. And so if a, and I think I'm going to get to that in a second, so I don't want to jump ahead. So when I, we're lining our, our years of experience up to those minimum qualifications, again, making sure that the pay or the person is placed in the correct quartile for that position. And if they are not, then we're moving them up to the bottom of that range, all right? So that way they're at least paid what, what market would be paying for that position. So base estimate of the annual base pay costs. So when we look at 550% of our employees are either at where they should be or above where they should be in regards to their positions. And you can see all the other figures, and really what this, this plays out to is about 51% of our employees will receive some type of a compensation change or grade change. Back up. Everyone will receive a grade change, but not everybody will receive compensation change. There we go. This slide is really, it's, it's really impactful. And I think over the, the last year, year or two that I have talked to y'all, I started off telling you about the, some of the challenges we had with the ordinance where, where our employees come in, they're placed at a certain salary within a grade. And anytime that we offered COLA or y'all approved COLA, what the ordinance required me to do was to change the grade with the same percentage that I was changing the employees' pay. And so really what happened is the employees never had an opportunity to move through their grade range. And that's what you see over here on the left. So 754 of our folks, that's pretty much where they, I called it the cement sneakers. And that's really where they, they started and they didn't receive any kind of progression through that grade. They did receive pay increases, but not progression through the grade. What on the right, based on the study, what we are showing is a much more healthier organization by implementing the study. And that will, it spreads folks out through, you know, obviously all the four quartiles. You'll also see there were nine folks that were below, and those were folks that we identified through the final phase that were working outside our classification, and we need to get those folks adjusted to the right ones. This is also a really impactful slide, and what it shows is that we, every other year, we have to do a EEO four report. And what it does is it reports based on ranges and then, you know, where is the salary change? And so for those that are making less than three, 3,200, they're 100% of those folks are going to be getting a raise. And then when you look at those that are making 74%, only 48% of those people were getting a raise or a salary change. Now y'all may know that back in early January, timing is everything, right? We were just getting ready to provide, you know, County Manager Pender our findings and the Just Economics came out with a recommendation for living wage to be increased to $17.70 an hour. We will be using the 17 or recommending the use of $17 an hour. And the reason for it is Just Economics, their hourly rate or hourly hours worked is 2,000. We work 2080, but we offer employees two weeks worth of vacation where those 2,000 hours did not include the vacation. And we have a very, very healthy paid time off policy, and so we're going to be using the 17 if that's all right. So the next steps is that we are going to be partnering with the, the Cape Department to create educational materials and get this out to all our employees. We will provide an enterwise, enterprise wise policy and procedures to outline exactly how this will work. We will commit to doing a salary survey every three to five years. So for that question is, was this it? Are we ever going to do any more? Nope, this is something for a healthy organization. They should be doing this every three to five years, making sure that we survey the market, that our positions are where they should be, and reviewing job, job descriptions as well. And with your permission, we will be bringing this back on the 19th for your approval, hopefully, your approval. Questions? I went pretty fast through all that.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you, Sharon, and to your team, because I know this has been a tremendous amount of work. And I know our employees have been anxiously awaiting it, but it is well worth the time because it builds a really solid foundation for us going forward. And so thank you all very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, great presentation. It doesn't sound like there's any other questions for now. Thank you, we look forward to talking further. All right, Commissioners, that gets us through the three items that were listed originally. But I did want to, we do have plenty of time, so let's have a, maybe it's a short discussion about the item under new business approval of COVID recovery funding. So there is some additional information that's been added to the website regarding the three proposals that we're going to discuss this evening. One is an application from the Buncombe County Buncombe Partnership for Children. And then there's two affordable, new, new construction, affordable housing proposals, one from the Asheville Housing Authority and the other, and that's for the D-Review Phase One project, and the other is from Mountain Housing Opportunities for the Lake Shore Apartments Project in South Asheville, actually just outside the city limits off Hendersonville Road. Maybe if some folks from the Early Childhood Education Committee might just share a few high-level thoughts about the Buncombe Partnership for Children, maybe just a little bit of information about the time sensitivity around it while we're looking at that one early, maybe just a real high-level overview of it, and then we'll talk more at the meeting course.
Great, I'll start and then Robert or Al, please jump in if you'd like to. So just very, very quickly, the, this process, I, in many ways, actually began about a year and a half ago, when Commission asked our Early Childhood Committee to develop some specific recommendations around how we could begin meaningfully investing in pre-K expansion. That led to a six-month ad hoc work group process of really digging deeply into options that North Carolina counties have available to them for expanding access to quality pre-K. And a set, set of recommendations that came to us almost about a year ago, about June of 2021, that really focused on increasing access to NC pre-K as a strategy that made the most sense given the landscape in Buncombe County. At that point, the county began working with Buncombe Partnership for Children, which of course, folks know is our local kind of issue area expert and anchor institution around these issues. And they did a very deep dive process of working with early childhood providers, working directly with families to identify a set of strategies through which we could really begin seriously investing in pre-K expansion. That culminated in a report which was presented and unanimously endorsed by our Early Childhood Committee early in 2022, that identified six targeted strategies over a two-year period to really focus on strengthening the infrastructure of our current NC pre-K program and creating the environment in which more providers can begin to open NC pre-K classrooms and addressing some of the long-term structural barriers we know have made it difficult for families to access NC pre-K in particular, including the shortened days and transportation issues. This package of strategies, which has been before us several times at the discussion level, is now presented to us as a proposal to, for the ARPA funding. It's a two-year pilot project that's being proposed with a total request of around $3.2 million. And I think it's hard to overexpress the amount of enthusiasm that the Early Childhood Committee feels around this set of strategies. We had again, a unanimous endorsement of, of this being fully funded as well. And just really reinforcing that in order for us in Buncombe County to get serious about the business of increasing access to pre-K, we need to invest in serious ways in the, the, the infrastructure and some of the Evergreen challenges we know that have made it very difficult to expand access in the past. And this project does, does that and structures it in a way where we have opportunities for assessment and evaluation throughout. And then at the end of the pilot period, we'll have a lot of good rich data to assess which strategies we want to continue moving forward with. So with that, I'll close out. Robert, Al, if there's anything y'all want to add, please do. Or if there's any questions at this point, please let the three of us know.
No, Jasmine, I think you said, oh, it's, uh, our whole committee is, has endorsed and 100%. And I know I am not speaking for Al, but I know we talked about it earlier and.
We're, we're on board to do it. So hopefully we can get some more information and like I say, the data is there that we need it. Now we need to just follow through with this one-time money that we've got coming.
I agree with what's been said. We're where we need to be at this point in time. And it's critical that if we're going to get to universal pre-K, this is where I think this starts it for us, because we've got to move ahead. We've done excellent work in the past and will continue with what we'll be approving tonight, but it's time for us to move to the next level and this does it. Yeah, right?
Great, all right. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, thanks for that preview. We'll do it all again at five o'clock. And, and then so there's two affordable housing proposals and one from the Asheville Housing Authority for the D-Review, we're calling the Phase One D-Review, Reimagining D-Review Project, and then the Mountain Housing Opportunities, the Lake Shore Villas Apartments in South Asheville. And so the Affordable Housing Subcommittee has been reviewing these two proposals along with, I don't know, I guess about 10 to 12 other proposals that were submitted to the Affordable Housing Services Program application process. The organizations sponsoring these proposals applied to both ARPA and Affordable Housing Services Program funding. But so the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation is to support these two projects through Recovery Act funding. I think we, we had a great list of proposals that came forward this year. I think the most like robust set of very high-quality proposals we've ever had before. So we're going to have some other recommendations for the Affordable Housing Services Program funding and some great projects over there, but which don't have the time sensitivity that these two do. So again, the time sensitivity issue is that there's a May 13th application that both these projects would need to submit into the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency to be eligible to receive the low-income housing tax credit. to be eligible to receive the low-income housing tax credit allocations. The, the two projects are, one's a nine percent project, the other's a four percent project. We've talked about some of the different, they're similar, but they've got some differences. But just a real quick overview, the Deverview Project being proposed by the Housing Authority, that would be for between eighty to eighty-two new affordable apartment units. And the Lake Shore Project would be for, which is in South Asheville, for Mount Housing, that would be a hundred and twenty affordable apartments. And again, these are very, a high degree of affordability here. The average price points for these is for residents of Buncombe County who make sixty percent of the area median income. So a very high degree of affordability. And all of the units will be eligible for residents who hold vouchers. So there's this big, as we talked about, this big gap in the number of units that accept vouchers. These two projects by themselves would make a real meaningful difference to them. The committee's recommendation is to support the Deverview Project at the nine hundred thirty-five, two hundred and eighty-six dollar level and the Lake Shore Project at the seven hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollar level. This, the developers did request more funding than this. And so we, our staff did a great job kind of helping us analyze, you know, what's the amount that we really feel like we need to put into this to really fill the true gap need for the projects. And the developers would be able to receive a developer fee for the projects, but would defer a portion of it. And that's part of how we see the, the projects financially, you know, working. So two hundred units between the two projects. So these two projects by themselves would get us over ten percent of the way towards our twenty thirty goals. So, you know, really meaningful in that regard. And for the county's total investment here of a little over one point six million dollars for these housing projects, the Deverview Project, you know, the tax credit leverage from that is over seven million dollars. And on the Lake Shore, almost ten million dollars. So these two projects will leverage over fifteen million dollars of tax credit equity to Buncombe County. So a real powerful way to use our funds to support really significant projects. So anyway, we're excited about it. Parker, Amanda, any additional comments or thoughts from, from y'all about this? We've been spending a lot of time looking at spreadsheets and stuff over the last couple of months around these and others.
I just can't, I know I've heard you say it like five times today already, but did you mention just now the May thirteenth deadline and kind of, okay?
Yes. Okay. That's what's driving, that's why we're talking about it today. And this is our last meeting before that date. So the city council, there's also a request to the city council on the Deverview Project. Their HCD Committee, which is kind of their Affordable Housing Committee equivalent, had a favorable recommendation. So city councils are planning on taking up the recommendations from their committee at their meeting a week from today.
Quick question. So it strengthens the proposals to have these levels of funding from the city and county going into them seemingly?
Right. They, you know, even though there's all this tax credit equity, because they do set their rents at these really affordable levels, you know, they don't generate as much revenue as a typical market rate apartment project would. So there is a financial gap there that we help fill. And, but for these two projects, we weren't asked to fill all of it. For the Deverview, it's the city and, the city and the county. And then for the Lake Shore, it's the county and Dogwood. So there's a significant request to that organization as well, which hasn't been finalized. But people feel optimistic that it's been well received and there'll be a decision coming from their organization before May thirteenth as well.
And for the nine percent project, which I know is a more competitive type of application, is there a scenario, should that not be funded at nine percent level? This could be reimagined as a four percent project? Or is that kind of wait to see and?
What, David Nash has been attending our meetings from the Housing Authority and kind of talking to us about this. It is a very competitive process. From what David has said, if it's not successful in this cycle, I think the most likely scenario is that they would reapply for the nine percent program next year. These, you know, projects of less than a hundred units sort of are more challenging to do through the four percent program. Those, those projects do better when they're, you know, larger. So I think they would probably just reapply. And some of these projects we've seen succeed in the past, take one or two or three cycles to, to, to get selected. So, yeah.
And if I could, I forgot to address like the one thing you asked me to address on early childhood, which was why it was time sensitive. Okay. So excited about pre-K. The reason it is time sensitive is that there is a July one start date for this project. And, and this, and early May is basically the latest date the Buncombe Partnership for Children could be informed about a funding decision and still be able to begin it, implementation on July one, meaning that that basically coincides with sort of the start of a new enrollment year for a lot of programs. So that was the, the time sensitive piece of it. Sorry, I forgot to talk about that. I will do better at five o'clock.
All right, commissioners. So if the, if the, if the commission does approve these three projects this evening, so they add up to just about, about four point nine million dollars. Our round two ARPA funding was for an additional allocation of twenty-five million dollars rounding, rounding those numbers. So this would be about twenty percent of our round two allocation. So, you know, we still have twenty million more to make decisions on. And, but the fact that it's in early childhood education and affordable housing, you know, high priorities. I think that's a great, great projects to get, to get launched. Any other questions about this for now? All right. Well, we will, that's everything that was on our agenda. So we can adjourn and we will reconvene at five o'clock for the regular meeting.